Good morning, Mark. I told you we were gonna talk to you and I didn't look for.
Good morning. I'm from Haverhill. I have a meeting. I have a fight here. Just a minute. Yes. I think I've basically always got to the madness. He was in the mall. Why were they getting his head?
We're gonna move on. Uh, check. Hey, you go. Yeah. We're gonna be here. We'll be here. We'll make sure I have a team over on the other side.
Good morning, everyone. I'll call a meeting to order if you would please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you again for this day. We thank you for this time together as public servants to do the people's business and for the freedom that allows us to do that. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. All right. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda for the March 11 minutes, same series transfer report, cash balance report, and the commissary report. I'll entertain a motion to accept those.
There were a couple corrections in the minutes, but Jennifer made those this morning.
Okay. Yeah, I've got an updated copy here for signature, so.
So I'm going to accept.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay. Are there any public comment on any of the agenda items? Hearing none, we'll move on to money matters. Sheriff, you're up first.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The first two, when we did that late pay increase for the jail, we just had, we had corporals change positions. So when they got moved into a new line, that pay did not follow them, so they were just shorted. So we're just asking that money to make up that difference, to make those lines correct. And number three of the bulletproof vest, it's just money that we've received back from the federal government as part of that grant.
It's a grant.
We would just like to receipt that in where we can use it. I move approval.
Got a motion in a second. Any other questions? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Highway.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're looking for this appropriation to cover the matching part of the community crossings, matching grant, as well as some overages for the project coming up this year. We're gonna keep seal three roads, 650 North, Cassidy, and La Doa Road, so.
This is money that's already in the MBH, right? Where is moving to use it?
Uh, no, it's coming from the cash balance, from what I understand.
Yeah, cash balance.
Yeah, to the MBH.
So it's not.
Right.
But it was money that we didn't budget, right? Because we didn't know? Is that correct?
Um, we knew, but it's because we had two community crossings projects last year, we had to move this money for this year's project.
Okay. How are we looking on cash balances there, Mindy?
I've got it here, if you don't have it. Uh, 3.9 million dollars, 3 million 980,000 in cash balance right now.
Okay. All right, thanks.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion in a second. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Jessica.
Good morning. Um, so we received a grant to host a hazmat technician class, and then also to have a hazmat tabletop exercise. And so this is just appropriating that money that we'll receive back from the state.
Will receive back, or we have received back?
We will.
Okay. Got a motion in a second. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Jessica.
Good morning. Um, so we received a grant to host a hazmat technician class, and then also to have a hazmat tabletop exercise. And so this is just appropriating that money that we'll receive back from the state.
Will receive back, or we have received back?
We will.
Okay. Got a motion in a second. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Jessica.
Good morning. Um, so we received a grant to host a hazmat technician class, and then also to have a hazmat tabletop exercise. And so this is just appropriating that money that we'll receive back from the state.
Will receive back, or we have received back?
We will.
Okay. Got a motion in a second. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
And up next, transfer appropriations. These are all sherries.
Good morning.
Morning.
This is a transfer needed for our group insurance. Um, I had originally budgeted $56,000 and discovered at the end of January it had been reduced to 4,430. And I was given the reason that the insurance was taken down to allow the budgets to pass the state's requirements.
I see Matt Nelson looking at me. Um, so we discussed this during the budget process, the budget approval. We had already advertised a certain number in when we did the raises. Anybody that sat outside of county general, so county general had that lump sum in your budget to cover everybody. But if you were being paid outside of county general, then we didn't have anything advertised. We didn't have a buffer, if you will, to cover those raises. So we had to take it out of, um, because you can't approve higher than you advertise. So we had to take it out of other lines and then come back for an additional, um, because we just, it was decided that we were, would cover the salaries and then come back and cover the other lines. The sheriff did it earlier this year, covered, took the ones that, um, did his appropriations earlier. Um, but yeah, this was all discussed during the budget process, and it was essentially it's, we couldn't adopt higher than what we advertised, so.
Gotcha. All entertain a motion?
So this is, this is coming out of the council's fund ultimately?
No, no, it'll stay, it'll just be, she did it as a transfer, but, um, it could've been done as an appropriate, an additional appropriation. It won't, the money won't come out of, or the funds won't come out of county general, it'll come out of her individual.
Comes out of a PSAP.
The PSAP, yeah.
It'll come out of the PSAP.
It'll come out of the PSAP.
Got a motion in a second. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, old business, a little further discussion on the public defender fund. Mindy got some, uh, information about what it would cost to match salaries and the differentials and stuff. You've got that there?
Morning.
Morning.
I'm here to answer any questions. Um, the numbers that Mindy had looked pretty similar to what Derek had in his letter that I gave you last month when we were here and talked about that. Um, those numbers look daunting, but keep in mind, remember, the idea here is we'll save over 100,000 with the reimbursement once we get it back from the state if we get into the program, so.
Yeah, I got a couple of questions, Brian, thanks.
Sure, I'll try and answer.
Yeah, well, I asked for a couple of things, information, uh, initial presentation, I asked for a copy of the analysis, and, um, can't think of his name.
Derek Mason.
Yeah, I said he, you know, I still haven't seen those. And basically what I was looking for is looking at the, the numbers, and I assume what they look at is the number of the caseload, and, you know, the folks are working on those.
Did you get the email that he sent? Did I forward it on?
Yeah, but it didn't have that information in it.
Okay.
It just had, just a summary of stuff.
Okay, well, I guess maybe we, we didn't understand what you were looking for then.
Yeah, because that's what he was talking about, so, anyway, I'd like to see those.
Okay.
Be interested, and then I think you'd mentioned that you go forward along the report that you provide to the state on activities, I think, for prior year.
Okay.
We talked about that.
Brian?
Yes?
To be, I see things in black and white, so I'm wondering, is there a way that we can list what we do now, list what this would do for us as far as money and cases and all that, and then how this project would benefit us? I know it's, you know, we're gonna have to spend money to make money, um, but I need it in black and white. Is there a way to do that?
Uh, oh, I'm sure there is. Um, I mean, I can talk to Derek and he can, I mean, he tried to do that in his letter, but we can try and set it out more specific if, you know, put it in two columns, kinda?
Three columns would be great.
Whatever you're, you're thinking about, okay. I mean, I'm happy to talk to him and see what we can come up with and get back with you. Um, I know there was talk last meeting about a committee, has there, has there been a committee formed, or?
Well, I mean, I think we all just need the information, and then, you know, we're talking about spending up to 186,000. Is it, is our net savings though 100,000, just to be clear?
According, according to Mr. Mason, who did the numbers, yeah.
Then does your...
I thought it was down to around 40, when we added all the...
No, it was gonna be 100, it started, it was gonna be 100.
It started out 76, and they said, well, when you put in all of the misdemeanors, it's gonna cut that down.
No, I believe his letters, it started out 176, and then when you transferred over, 170 something, when you transferred over from the, the one account that's, that, the line item that's in the supplemental right now, which isn't even being funded, because I don't have a, an attorney for that position, and I hope I can come back sometime this year and tell you I have one, but right now it's not looking promising, um, for that position. So that's, I mean, that money's not even being spent right now, but I didn't go back and look at his letter, um, let's see. Yeah, it was, he was at 100, he was at 192,000 before moving the, the, the line item budgeted for the fifth attorney from, from the supplemental to the, which dropped it down to 117, based on the numbers from last, his numbers were last year, Mindy's numbers are, are this year, so they're just a tad different, but they're pretty close.
Is there any opportunity to get, to talk to other counties about going together in a group? Was that an option?
Aye.
There's that west, um, central, uh, group that had other counties, I think if I understand that he was mentioning the workload though would not, would be too much to do that with them, is that correct?
The, the one with Fountain Ward and Vermillion, they each have one court, so they have a total of three courts, so that's why they could go together and be one unit. We have three courts, obviously, so, I mean, we, we could talk to the state about it, but I'm not sure if anybody else that would be willing to go with us at this point, and it'd be, um, you know, that would have...
My, my issue is, what I can't understand is, when we started this, what, five years ago now, you become...
The office?
Yeah.
2018, seven years ago.
And we had three courts, and we didn't have enough attorneys to, to represent defendants, and couldn't get contracts, and this was the solution, we have an attorney for each court, and a prosecutor for each court, and everything would run smooth. And it's been anything but that ever since. And now it takes five people in your office to do what three was gonna do just a few years ago, but when I see the sheriff's activity in the jail, it's less than what it was back then, the team of about 100 people. And the top two, uh, activities in the jail are probation violations and failure to appear. And I don't know how many times those people did do that, failed to appear, or fail, uh, violating probation, but if we could get rid of those, that could easily cut half of the activity out of the jail. And I, I'm wondering why you guys are overworked, is, I guess is my...
Well, the case loads up tremendously from then, I don't have the numbers, uh, Judge Petrie may be able to speak to that a little better than I can with, with the numbers, but, you know, we have now, there's six prosecutors, and right now we're operating with three full-time, probably defenders and, and four part-time contractors right now.
And it's still, the judges were gonna crack all that through with three defendants, and now we gotta double, we practically doubled everything. It's just a huge burden on the time to do all this, and I think they're doing it multiple times. And I don't know the answer to that, I'm not smart enough to come close to that question. I just know it's expensive, and there's no lie between the two of them.
You have, uh, an upcoming request to split one of your full-time positions, what effect does that have on this reimbursement program?
It would probably help, because then I, you know, lessen some of the caseload on the three of us right now. Because I haven't been able to find a, a fourth and fifth full-time attorney, and right now I have no resumes sitting on my desk and haven't had, basically, for several months. So I've been contacted, had some contact with two attorneys, um, from in, west side of Indianapolis, who are also part-time contracts in Tippin New County, and they're looking, they're interested in two part-time contracts, um, here. And so, uh, that would, I'm looking at, if you want me to talk about that now, or wait...
Well, I mean, it's all, I think it's all tied together, but yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm, I'm looking at split the one, uh, full-time position right now that's, that's, that's empty, that's 70, I think budgeted is either 76,000 or 78,000, and make that into two part-time 30,000 contracts each, two 30,000 contracts, and then those attorneys can take, um, you know, some of the caseload off of us, which will help if we get in the, in the commission, keep our caseloads in compliance. And, and they won't take any other resources from the, from the office or the county, and they're, they're not gonna get any county benefits, they're, they're, I think there was a note on, on the agenda, you know, there, we shouldn't need any more office equipment or anything of that nature, uh, because they have their own offices.
And the 30,000 dollars, is that, that's it?
The one-year contract, yeah.
That means just 30,000 dollars? No, that's it.
Correct. And then, and then a year, we gotta look and see if we're gonna renew it or not, uh, and, you know, uh, how many cases they have and so forth, what we, we have to, uh, you know, figure that out then, but yeah.
You're fairly certain you can fill those contracts?
I'm sorry?
You're fairly certain you can fill those contracts?
Those two, yes. I spoke to them last week, and I said I had to come here to get permission to do that before.
How does Boone County do this, Dan?
They, uh, they do it all by private contract assignment, and they can even assign cases to you if you aren't volunteering. I can say that from personal experience. So, but they have, they, they do it like we used to do it, uh, except that, and, and an attorney can sign up for misdemeanor or felony, it's not, the qualifications aren't the same for those two types of cases, but, and then they pay a flat fee for, depending on case type. And they, they have a lot, they have a lot more attorneys than we do, I think they have like 86 attorneys in their bar, and they also can draw from the metropolitan area for attorneys for this sort of thing, but the judges, that's how they've done it for 25 years, uh, over there. And I don't know if that's better or worse, that's just how they do it. They play a, they pay a flat fee per case, so, so much for each misdemeanor, so much for each type of felony, doesn't matter how long it takes, you just get paid a flat amount.
So if they got the metropolitan area, does that mean if an attorney works in Boone County, they have to be part of that pool?
Well, they don't have to be part of the pool, you sign up voluntarily, but if you, if your office is in Marion County and you wanna be in the pool, you just tell the judge you, you wanna be in. And the, it's up to the judge whether or not they accept them, but, but there are...
Who would want to be in it?
Some attorneys want the money.
All of them.
It's, it's a lot of young attorneys who do, younger attorneys do this more than older attorneys.
Well, can we invite them to here from Marion County?
Well, that's what Brian's doing.
Okay.
What's that? I've, I've posted, I, yeah, I, I mean, I, I try, and we're posting to law schools, we're posting in newsletters, uh, you know, it's...
And I think before, we had a contract with a couple attorneys from Boone County who did public defender work, one was the former prosecutor.
Mm-hmm, still do.
Yeah.
Todd Meyer, right?
Yeah, so some of the people that do the contract work even here are not from here.
Yeah, the, the four we have right now on contract are not from here. Uh, three of them are Boone County, and one of them is, you know, he, he does some work in Boone County and some other counties up north, I'm not sure where his actual office is, to be honest, if you stand here, but, yeah, the, the contract people are not from here, because, uh, two I used to have declined to renew last year, and so we're scrambling.
Um, I'm still in the camp that, you know, there's a lot of moving parts here, we got a lot of questions, um, I, I'd like to give consideration that, that we consider a study group here, you know, look at what the options are, I mean, we may come back and do exactly what he's asking, but there's just a lot of moving parts. I'm not opposed to his, um, you know, idea for the, the part-time folks or the contract work, but, um...
So it sounds like you just volunteered?
I, you know, I, I'd help, I, I know there's some other interests here that would probably help out too, but, um...
Okay, so, I keep, keeping putting this down the road, but, uh, yeah, Steve and Joyce, if you guys could work on something, have something for us by next meeting, and so we can get this figured out one way or another.
I don't know if I can do it by next meeting, because I'm...
Oh.
Should we have a motion on that?
Probably.
Thank you for showing up, Jake.
Yeah, if we could get one of the commissioners involved, would be good too, so, okay.
I won't, I can't do it all, I, I'll be, I'll help, I can't do all the organizing and all that, but I talked to Judge Petrie about this, I mean, he's on 40's warrant, he, he's saying this is the way to go. Uh, and you gotta take that in consideration.
All right.
So Joyce, Gary, and Jake can kinda look into it, Steve as you can, so.
Will you, you're gonna help us out?
Okay, thanks Jake. All right, so we'll just, uh, table that until next month, sorry, but we wanna make sure we get all the right information, make sure we're getting the right path for it.
No, that's fine, and I'll try and get Mr. Loy, whatever, whatever you want, or all of you, I mean, what I'll provide to him, so.
Do we need to address his request over the contract?
Um, yeah, while we got you up here, we'll go on, move on to new business and skip down to your part-time split position.
They're ready to start now, so yeah, I'd, I'd like to, and I, I got cases to give them, so I, you know, if you guys consider that now, I'd appreciate it.
You're just splitting the one position into two 30,000 dollar, two 30,000 dollar contracts?
So I'm saving you 17,000 right off the bat if we do that.
Okay.
Plus, plus the county benefits.
Yeah, there you go.
I moved it for splitting a position.
Mike? Okay. Got a motion in a second, any other questions for Brian on that? All those in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we got that.
And that would be the position currently in the general fund, correct? There's one of them still in the supplemental, and one of them's still in the general fund.
Okay.
We'll, we'll use the one in the general, because the supplemental evidently was not supposed to be used, so...
Right.
Um, we'll need to do transfers on the next, for the next meeting to move those to part timelines. It won't hold up you getting them in and getting them chartered.
So I'm telling them...
But yeah, we'll need...
I can get them signed this week, I contract them.
Yeah, and then I'll work with you to get transfers done.
Okay.
Just a quick reminder to use your microphones, please. I'm getting texts.
Ah, okay. Okay, thanks Brian.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, other new business, Sandra, Saunders, sorry?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Guess I'm back for lesson number two. I think, uh, you all have in front of you the job description that you requested the last time, uh, so today I'm pleased to present that to you, uh, for the part-time scanning position in the clerk's office, and just to remind you that role is designed to address the need for efficient document management, ensuring timely digitization of the records, enhancing accessibility for both the staff and the public. Um, this, this fund will be 100% supported from the Clerk's Perpetuation Fund, which, uh, the fund is, uh, to be dictated, to be used strictly for the purpose of preserving, preserving records, improving, um, record-keeping systems, and providing equipment necessary to accomplish those tasks. Uh, so I, I am pleased to present this before you, and I respectfully request your consideration and approval for the proposal for the part-time scanning position.
So when the money runs out in that fund, then this position would be deleted?
When, uh, for the year?
Well, didn't we talk about...
I mean, the fund, the Clerk's Perpetuation Fund is quite healthy right now, and I would foresee this maybe going for a couple of years to get all this stuff done, but we'll revisit that every year, see where we get, and, and kind of have a, an aggressive schedule to get that done.
Okay.
I think what Joyce was getting at, to make sure that you don't come back wanting money out of the general to do this, you're gonna take care of this out of that perpetuation fund.
Yeah, and that perpetuation fund funds itself at least 25,000 a year from the records I've, I've had access to, so I don't think we're gonna have any problem, uh, doing that for several years, and hopefully we'll get done with what's in the basement by then.
Right. So you think it's about two-year project to get this completed?
I, I would say it's hard for me to, to determine that.
Yeah, there was a lot of stuff in the basement.
There's a lot there, and then we also have a microfilm that is starting to split and break, and that all needs to be digitized, so that's probably an ongoing, um, process that we're gonna have to look into. Any other questions, concerns?
I'll make a motion to accept this.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion in a second, any other questions or discussions? All those in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, and a shout-out to General Review, we won't have any problem filling that position with a, um, a little announcement we got in the paper, so I appreciate that. And I did just wanna, if I can, just take a moment to address, there's a little bit of a spirited discussion, and that's come across my phone several times, and, and I just wanna say publicly that I trust the majority of the feelings expressed in this room came from a heartfelt need to be fiscally responsible with Montgomery County, and I'm assuming that's every one of the, your desires here today, and I have prepared, uh, for you a cost savings for my office, um, that I think we need to start having a discussion on, I'm just gonna leave it with you today, but a potential half a million dollars over about six years, and, uh, I would like for you to look at it and, and get back to me with questions.
Okay, thank you. While she's passing that out, we'll move on to the next item, authorizing an illegal intern position in the prosecutor's office. Good morning.
Good morning.
Deputy Prosecutor Jacob Moore, uh, Mr. Boozer's in the middle of a jury trial this morning, so I am here in his place. I wanna circle back just to provide a little bit more context, if I may, and I apologize for wasting the counsel's time, but when discussing the public defender's office, I do wanna note that it's not just criminal cases that those attorneys are handling, uh, there is one to two DCS attorneys that public defenders are appointed to, there's a 4D prosecutor, there are five criminal prosecutors, and then public defenders are appointed to contested adoptions as well.
that, and I did just want to, if I can, just take a moment to address, there's a little bit of a spirited discussion, and that's come across my phone several times, and, and I just want to say publicly that I trust the majority of the feelings expressed in this room came from a heartfelt need to be fiscally responsible with Montgomery County, and I'm assuming that's every one of the, your desires here today, and I have prepared for you a cost savings from my office, um, that I think we need to start having a discussion on, I'm just gonna leave it with you today, but a potential half a million dollars over about six years, and, uh, I would like for you to look at it and, and get back to me with questions.
Okay, thank you. While she's passing that out, we'll move on to the next item, authorizing an illegal intern position in the prosecutor's office. Good morning.
Good morning.
Deputy Prosecutor Jacob Moore, uh, Mr. Boozer's in the middle of a jury trial this morning, so I am here in his place. I want to circle back just to provide a little bit more context, if I may, and I apologize for wasting the council's time, but when discussing the public defender's office, I do want to note that it's not just criminal cases that those attorneys are handling, uh, there is one to two DCS attorneys that public defenders are appointed to, there's a four-D prosecutor, there are five criminal prosecutors, and then public defenders are appointed to contested adoptions as well, which can be handled by any number of private attorneys, so it's not just the three courts with the criminal cases that they're handling, and even if they were, uh, speaking for a superior court, too, the number of criminal cases that have been filed in that court in the past seven years have doubled. So, this is not something that, I don't think it's a fair assessment to that office to look back to two thousand and eighteen and say, well, the numbers were there at that point in time, they should be similar to what they are now. Uh, that's simply not the case, and I will also note that our office, the prosecutor's office, has greatly expanded our investigatory abilities, we're processing easily double to triple the amount of warrants that we had been doing ten years previously, which is allowing us to hold people accountable in the community that are violating laws, and also catching people that are harming, uh, members of our community through financial fraud and crimes. So, we're coming here today, uh, to ask for a certified legal intern position, I just want to make everyone here aware that we have five criminal prosecutors within our office, at the end of two thousand and sixteen, we're anticipating two of those attorneys retiring, and in sometime two thousand and seventeen, we're anticipating a third retiring. So, within an eighteen-month period, sixty percent of the criminal prosecutors in this county will be retired. Um, we are trying to identify people, uh, to bring into the community, to make sure that we don't have a loss of institutional knowledge and a loss of capabilities to continue to prosecute crimes that are committed in our county, conduct investigative work to identify criminals outside of our jurisdictions who have been harming our, our people. Um, we have identified one intern who's expressed interest for our office for this summer, uh, he's currently finishing up his second year of law school, uh, we're wanting to really get our hooks into him and make sure that he comes back when he finishes law school and then graduates the bar, because again, we're gonna be looking to fill two positions, and so far, we've had one. Uh, just for the council's edification, we had an open deputy prosecutor's position, and it took us approximately two years to fill that position, uh, so this is, we're trying to get the ball rolling soon, uh, and quickly with that. Additionally, in terms of fiscal responsibility, I do want to note for the council that we are not requesting any additional money, uh, from you guys, uh, this is gonna be coming entirely from the prosecutor's, uh, diversion deferral fund, so it is going to cost the county zero dollars. Um, I will note that the agenda has this list that is a base hourly rate at twenty-four dollars, and approximately seventy cents. I will note for the council that last year, uh, the way we were able to get our newest deputy prosecutor was we had a certified legal intern, uh, that the county graciously funded at thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents an hour. Um, so this classification is a decrease of about seven dollars an hour. I would respectfully request from the council that you approve us to fund it at that thirty-one twenty-five an hour, again, that's coming out of our deferral diversion money, it is not a request from the county council, it's not gonna ca- counts, cost Montgomery County taxpayer a single cent more, uh, and it will make these positions that we are going to have coming open within the next year more desirable, and will allow us to have a better chance of recruiting people in from, who would otherwise take positions in Tippi Canoe County, Marion County, places that are paying a little bit better. Um, and I think my general experience has been, and this has been the experience of our deputy prosecutor, if we can get them here in the community, they realize how good of a place this is to, to live and set up a life, and if we can get them here, I think they'll, they'll settle down, so...
You know, I might just comment, um, I know Brett and I stopped in and, and had some of this conversation with Joe, uh, a month ago or so, and, uh, we talked about, you know, there's gonna be some changes coming down to Pike in a couple of years, and they're gonna need bench strength, and we actually encouraged him, you know, let's get started sooner than later, because it's not gonna be an easy process to fill those, so, um, I appreciate what you're doing and the direction you're going, so...
Well, thank you all for taking the time to listen to this request.
Jacob, does this, does the thirty-one then put you in, uh, a competitive pool with Tippi Canoe and Marion?
Yes, um, additionally, and, and to be as blunt with everyone as possible, and I think anybody who's running a business or trying to recruit people in who aren't originally from here, there's a little bit of hesitancy to realize what a good place Montgomery County is. So, if we can compensate somebody to kind of say, listen, we're investing in you, we want you to come here to make sure that our office continues to function well, and by the way, once you actually get here, you're gonna like it. Um, I thi- and that's been our experience, is when we're recruiting people in, we just gotta get them here, uh, and they'll kind of realize what, what the rest of us realize, that it's a good place to, to set up a family and a life.
So, Tom, help us out here, I know Addie had some comments on this position, and how does that create issues here?
Well, if you guys recall, the process for positions is that, uh, we do a questionnaire, and then we establish a job description, and then Addie, uh, creates, uh, factor points for each position, and then based on that, it's, it's put into our new classification system, so in her analysis, she put the position into, uh, PAT B, which would be, as Jacob mentioned, uh, twenty-four dollars and, um, seventy cents or seventy-one cents almost per hour, so, the thirty-one twenty-five hourly request was not considered by Addie and is not part of the, our compensation system, and I'm not sure where that would fall into our, um, classification system that we've established.
Jacob, is there, is that a, is that a cap, is that, is that a max, or... For the hourly rate? Yeah, well, for the overall yearly compensation. So, yes, and this would just be, make it clear for the council, this is a summer internship position, we are not looking to keep this position open into the fall and into the winter. Um, ideally, long-term, when we're presenting our budget for the fall approval, again, this, the idea is that it'll be coming out of our diversion deferral fund, but we're gonna be looking to request two of these intern positions for next summer, and then to have those positions open again, costing the county zero dollars, uh, it's coming out of our diversion deferral funds in anticipation that we're gonna have those two retirements, because my fear is that if we drop down to three attorneys at the start of twenty-seventeen, twenty-twenty-seven, and then the middle of twenty-seven lose that third, we're not gonna have enough prosecutors to cover each courtroom, let alone be processing the warrants that we need to be doing, to be processing and doing education for law enforcement, and if you guys are concerned about cases and people being in custody at the jail longer than they need to be, there's a decrease in the proficiency and the efficiency of attorneys to process those when we decrease public defenders, I guarantee you, if we drop prosecutors, we're not gonna be able to process those cases through as quickly, and get those resolved and get those people either sent to the Department of Corrections or released from custody in an expeditious manner. And I think you answered the question, my other question a little earlier about where the potential candidate that you have would be from. So, that gentleman is, we've interviewed, uh, him a couple of times, I've been fortunate enough to speak with him again to make sure that we're keeping him apprised of our request to you all, uh, he's originally from Lebanon, Indiana, um, he served in the military, I believe he did two combat tours in Iraq, uh, then he was a police officer in Missouri, uh, a little bit later in life, uh, decided, hey, I'm gonna go to law school, uh, is familiar with the area, loves, loves the community, so we're, we're really wanting to make sure that he realizes that we've got a position open for him, because finding somebody like that who's quasi-local, is familiar with the area, and has a good set of values is gonna be a little bit harder than, than it would be, should be.
And I think Tom's trying to say, and Steve as well, we're trying to be consistent in trying to do and follow the guidelines of, of everything we've spent time and money to, uh, on this, uh, pay scale, uh, but I do know, and, uh, Tom, there is a, and we did talk to Addie about, if there are situations where a person has more, um, experience and, uh, and, and things that you can put on paper, then maybe we can talk over, have it to where we can raise that price or that amount of money per hour up. You know, we talked about, so, we, we're trying to be fair, but we want to be consistent, and we want, and we gotta be, watch out what we're doing with our money, too, and I know it's money coming from, from your department, but, uh, there's a lot of things coming down the pipe from the, the governor's office and the state that's gonna affect a lot of things, so, um, but we want to be fair with you, and be fair to Sheriff's Department, Highway, all elected officials here, um, so if there's reasons why you think these people should get more money than what's, what's put down on paper, then justify it, a- and, and put it down, and then we can look it over.
Well, I mean, the, the short answer for you is, there is a, there is a big shortage of attorneys within the state, and I know you guys have been hearing this from the public defenders, when we opened up our position, uh, for an additional deputy prosecutor, it took us two years to fill that. I, I can't think of a time in, in Mr. Boozer's thirty years as the elected prosecutor that it's taken him two years to fill a deputy prosecutor spot. Um, you go to any other office, whether it's Public Defender, Prosecutor's Office, Indiana Department of Corrections, they are open, there are open spots there, and so really, it's not necessarily that we're, we've got a home run candidate who's got...
Right.
A, an, an amount of experience and qualifications, the truth of the matter is, we need somebody in here, and we're trying to be as proactive as we can, so we don't hit, hit that time period, and we're losing capabilities as an office to be able to investigate crimes, to train up law enforcement, and to process cases in a timely manner. That's, that's, I mean...
Right, and I know that Steve and I, when we met with Joe, that was one of the big concerns that he had in his office, was when he gets ready to retire, and there may be another one retire at the same time, that, uh, uh, you know, you, you run into that at the Sheriff's Department, too, then you want to be where you, don't get yourself in a, in a situation where you're going down the drain and can't get it stopped, and I know what you're saying, and it affects you, affects the judges, affects the Sheriff's Department, affects the jail, so, I know you're trying to be proactive, and that's, that's great.
Well, and I want to toot law enforcement's horn, I mean, since we've had a fully-staffed prosecutor's office, we've been able to hit the ground running pretty hard investigating certain types of crimes that we just had, didn't have the manpower in the past to really hit at, so, I mean, I'm proud of the, the work that, that agency, both Crawfordsville and the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office has done for internet crimes against children, we process those warrants quickly, we identify those people quickly, we get them into custody about as quickly as we can, and that's something that we're able to do, because we have a fully-staffed prosecutor's office, I and the deputy prosecutor that we hired in are able to process those warrants very quickly, often within several hours of receiving them. We're able to get those requests sent off, and we're able to identify people in the community that you don't want out there that are unidentified.
Right.
And so, the concern is that if we start losing that ability to process those types of crimes, we're gonna be like similar to other counties where our officers and our office are helping surrounding counties identify those people, because we're proficient at it, we've developed that skill set, and we have the, the manpower to do it, and I don't think those people are the, the types you want walking around, not being identified.
Maybe help move it along, I'd like to make a motion that we approve, um, Jacob's request, uh, within the authority that we have, which I think is, uh, what, the twenty-four...
Twenty-four seventy.
Twenty-four seventy, um, however, uh, subject to review of our study group and Addie, uh, just to see if, uh, by chance, they're, you know, we haven't classified correctly, uh, yeah, based on qualifications, if there's some room there, but...
And I... And I do, before you all vote, I do want to thank, uh, Mr. Klein for the help he's had given to our office in working through this process, it was very expeditious, it also was very helpful for me to have an ear to bounce that off of, so thank you, Mr. Klein, for that.
One, one more clarification, just, just to be sure, that twenty-four seven is, is that for the intern rate, or when it be, when that would become a full time?
That would be for the intern rate, and that classification, that PAT classification...
Thirty-one for the intern rate?
Pardon?
You're wanting the thirty-one for an intern rate?
So, we do have a motion and a second, any other questions or discussion? Okay, call vote, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Jacob.
Thank you all for your time.
Yes, thanks.
Okay, I gotta pass this down. Uh, you have come in your way a resolution expressing the council's desire to eliminate the ERPS committee, um, the, Dan can kind of elaborate on this, it's just, uh, as we're going into this new compensation, uh, program, this is just one of the old things we need to clean up the, the books with, so...
Correct, you adopted a new compensation study last year, but the remnant of the old system is in the employee handbook, and so, um, the county commissioners, uh, would like to change that to match what you've done, but they really need your, uh, permission to do that, so this resolution would, um, encourage them to make that change in the employee handbook. I'll be happy to answer any questions. I'll make a motion, we sign it.
Have a motion and a second, any other questions or discussion?
Yeah, does this affect your bookkeeping, does this kind of come off of pay scale or pay ledgers, will that affect the auditor's office?
We've already been, um, working off of the new salary schedule, so...
Any other questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Staff and elected officials report, same funding organizations here? Nope, no, you're right, come on up. That's okay. You're enthusiastic, so we'll let you get first.
Is that on? Is that on?
I think you're on.
Uh, good morning, I wanted to give you guys an update, um, the ratio study for the twenty-five pay twenty-six values was turned into the state timely and approved. Um, the assessed, total gross assessed value, not including personal property utilities or mobile homes for twenty-four pay twenty-five, was three billion nine hundred and one thousand one hundred and eighteen and some change. For twenty-five pay twenty-six, it is now going to be four billion four hundred and twenty thousand seven hundred and thirty-six thousand and some change, so, that's actually gonna go up a little bit, we're still doing over the next week or so data entry for, uh, new industrial construction and commercials, so those are good, good gains for our end, that's a thirteen percent increase overall, uh, well over five hundred, almost five hundred and twenty million in gain there. Uh, my staff's already working on twenty-six pay twenty-seven, so we're already ahead of everybody else. Overall, each area has gone up ten to fifteen percent, and that's a combination of new construction cost tables provided by the DLGF and just the sales to back those up, the market is slowing, but for, in two thousand and twenty-four, which are the sales these values are based off of, they were not declining at all, we still were seeing them paying more than the assessed value, even though we've had significant increases, so, it's kind of where we are at that. Form elevens, which are my statements of proposed value for twenty-five pay twenty-six, will be mailed to taxpayers on May first, that is their time to look at those and file an appeal. They have until June the seventeenth, normally the fifteenth by statute, but that falls on weekends, so June seventeenth to file an appeal on those values. If you get any questions about those, anyone, please send them to my office, we do a ton of education that time of year, so, we are, we are, um, long days, lots of people, which we encourage, we like taxpayers to come in, the best assessments, um, always, I will always maintain, or when the taxpayer works with the assessor to make sure that everything is as it should be. We will be doing our last year, rare in our last year of reassessment for this time for twenty-five, new one starts in twenty-six, they just roll right on through. Um, let's see, uh, new cost tables, oh, and parcel count, we, Montgomery County for real estate parcels has always been in the twenty-three thousand range, we actually think we're gonna break twenty-four this year with some of the new neighborhoods, um, and that'll increase our assessed value anymore, so, any questions? No? Okay.
Thank you. Any other Department of Ed's elected officials, speaking of which, here comes one.
Good morning again, I just wanted to check with you, we, we talked last year about, um, the jail roof, um, and just given the climate of the council meetings and the uncertainty of, of what's coming down the pike for, from the state, um, as you recall, we, we did the inmate portion, the pod portion of, of the roof, um, and simply ran out of time last year to do the, the other main portion, which was still, it wasn't leaking, um, but they said, you know, it probably had two to three years until it needed to be replaced, so, I, I just wanted to get guidance from you, a- as, do you want me to look into that? Do you want to hold off on that?
I would say go ahead and look into it, give us some estimates and figure what it's gonna cost, yeah.
And I've done that, it's, I mean, we're, we're looking at around two, two hundred and seventy thousand, i- is what we're looking at, to, to do the remainder portion of the jail roof.
Wasn't that part of the overall plan, though, we had to fix a portion of it?
It was.
And it was gonna wind up...
We talked about it, yeah.
Be in the whole roof by the time we got done?
It was, um, it's not... It's not leaking. So, so it's really a matter of, I mean, I mean, if we want to be proactive, I mean, it's getting industry repaired. The new parts, great. I, I just wanted to get guidance from you guys as to, if you want to move forward with that, or if you want to just wait. It's.
I think it needs to be done, it needs to be done.
I've heard some discussion that we need to be looking at roof for this building too. Is there?
That's coming down in the next year or two.
Yeah, we mentioned that in the joint meeting with the commissioners. Mr. Baumwell mentioned the estimate is about five hundred thousand dollars that to replace the roof of the government center, which needs to occur in the next, I think, three to five years, I believe, is the timeline.
And if I may, twenty-year life on EPDN's pretty good, and the jail roof has been on for twenty years, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, we probably need to be looking at both of them, right? Same time?
Probably.
Yep. Very good.
And air, air conditioners, everything else seems to be working fine?
Knock on wood, yes. Yep. Yeah, everything we replaced is, has been good. We're still waiting on one item for the kitchen, the, the cold tray. Those are built to order. But no, everything else we've replaced is, has worked great.
Good. Good.
Thanks, Ryan.
Just a quick update on the courthouse and Thomas Milligan buildings. Courthouse on the interior, we have, phase one is basically complete, it's about ninety-five percent complete. We're still waiting on countertops and some doors. Once phase was, is complete, then we'll be able to move the clerks down to the first floor. So, we're looking at that. The, the tentative date right now is about May second. Then they will start phase two, which is actually phase three in the building. We're kind of skipper running, skipping around the prosecutor's office on the second floor. We're doing a lot of work in that area. We really haven't come to the agreement, what we're going to do with the prosecutors at this time. So, we're kind of skipping around them at this time. So, phase two, which is phase three, is now part of the first floor, where, where the four D is housed, and then the clerk's area on the second floor. So, that will be coming here soon in May. They were ahead of schedule on the interior. This will slow them back to the regular schedule. On the exterior, they have cleaned the monument. They, they did three sets of stain removal on the monument. I don't know if you've passed by and seen, but most of the stain is gone. As it dries out, some of that stain will come back through. So, we'll have maybe some decisions to make on whether we do any more treatment. We go much deeper and we'll be getting into the stone, so keep that in mind. They're doing low-end tuck pointing around the building and they are working on the roof. So, there will be some noise. Employees will have to live with a little noise over the next two and a half to three months. So, things are progressing well. Parking lot is still closed. We still need that laydown space for the workers and materials. That'll continue to be closed until the exterior is mostly complete. So, Thomas K. Milligan Center, again, that's an ADA improvement over there. They are working on the south portion, south side of the building right now, which is where the new ADA ramp and entrance door will be. So, they have poured some concrete on the back and will pour the porch slab yet this week, weather permitting. And so, they will look to complete that backside as far as concrete and ADA work within the next two to three weeks, and then move to the north side, which is the front with the steps and the porches. So, progressing slowly but surely over there. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Yeah, Mark, just one thing. I did go into the courthouse the other day after the meeting, and if you've not been in the courthouse, it's worth going in and, and walking around because it's, it really is starting to come into shape. It looks nice. It smells a lot better. It's going to be, it's going to be, it, it's going to be different once we get it completed. And I think the people there will appreciate what we get, when we get it finished. And just a question on this here, the roof, you know, we talked a little bit about it. I don't know, just if you've ever thought about metal on, on this roof and maybe talking with Nucor to see if they would work with us on a, maybe give us a better price to put metal on this compared to shingles? Just a question.
Yeah, we haven't done that, but that's something we could do, yes.
Any questions? Okay. Any mouse? Good. Nope, Brian's coming back.
You had your, you had your one shot.
I only get one?
Yes.
That's why it's on the agenda, I thought. Now, real quick, I, I wanted to thank Mr. Moore for his comments, but I also, he's, as usual, one step ahead of me. We have a potential individual for an internship in our office this year. I, I don't have a deferral fund to pay one out of, so I'm looking for some guidance from, from you all. I don't know if we can use a supplemental fund for a one-time summertime internship. But I guess first question is, if, if I find someone who will do it without pay or through some program through a law school, I assume the council's okay with that. But if, if, if I need to get with, with Tom and, and do it, I assume it'd be a little different job description, not too much different, but just the difference in our offices, obviously, what my next step would be to get an internship, intern in for that, so.
Well, if you need an appropriation, we would have to go through additional appropriation or transfer of funds. But we would fill out the job questionnaire and we would send that to Addy. She'd do the same analysis as she did for Jacob, and then she'd come back with a recommendation for that position.
Okay. So, I get with you to?
Yeah.
Deal with that, then?
Yeah. Yeah, job, and we'll get a job description too from Addy.
Okay. Any other questions about that or anything?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Minnie?
Okay, first quarter is crazy in our office. We have all three annual financial reports submitted timely. We have the solid waste, there's a thing you have to do for solid waste. Basically, everything for first quarter's done and on time. We also just completed, working with Sherry's office and Heather's office, we completed the abstract of taxes, pushed them to Heather. Heather's got the file over to the printer and tax bills will be going out on time. I have posted in all the papers, the tax rates for all the units, and I've sent them all out to you guys as well. We are down one person in our office, so it, it's been a busy year already with tax, for tax season. We're getting a lot of walk-ins, a lot of, a lot of calls. If you guys have any questions on taxes or the bills or anything like that, feel free to reach out to anyone in our office. We've even got our accounts payable person doing tax stuff. So, we're all pretty knowledgeable on, on what's happening there, even with all the state changes with the deductions, especially the over sixty-five. So, that is where we stand. I can't think of anything else on that. I do want to take a second, though, and talk about, there's some old-school thinking that if it's not county general, it doesn't cost the taxpayer money. And it, as the finance person, it bothers me to hear that a little bit, and I'm sure all you guys know, and I understand why it's said that way, but just the pretrial diversion fund or any of those other funds that aren't county general still potentially cost the taxpayer money. You know, we used to pay a salary out of the pretrial fund. I'm just using that as an example. Nothing against you guys all. We used to pay a person out of the pretrial fund, so that took some relief off of general. So, anytime we use a fund outside of county general, it's helping county general. So, not using those funds or using those funds like that, it, it is still taxpayer money or county money. It's, there's, there's some thought out there that it isn't, but that's not really how it works. I just wanted to clarify that.
Tom?
I just got a couple of updates on our Purple Heart Parkway project. If you've been down there at two thirty-one in Purple Heart Parkway, you may have noticed the curbs have been poured, the sidewalks have been installed as well there at the intersection. That was one of the main things towards the end that we were waiting for. We did find out that NDOT is telling us we have to install a few more pedestrian crossing poles, so we're trying to get more details on that. And we do have a drainage issue on the west end that we're working on. So, project is not completely done, but it's getting really, really close to getting those barrels removed. Also want to bring up the waterline product on Nucor Road. If you recall, the county did a bond for that, but we also had a grant from the state from the Ready Two Point O funds, which is one point five million dollars. And I think I've reported before that we are not able to access that grant until the Lafayette region, which we belong to now for Ready Two Point O, has expensed sixty-five percent of the Ready One Point O funds. And so, we had a meeting of the Lafayette Region's Board last week and received a report that the one, Ready One Point O will not be expensed until about June or July to be at sixty-five percent. We may need this money prior to that to pay for our waterline project, so we're working with Jeff Peters on some operate, some options for some short-term funding for that. We also learned, though, that even if money is released in June or July, does that, does that, it does not mean that we'll actually get the money at, at those two months. So, that's why we're trying to figure this out because our waterline project is supposed to be done before June or July. And so, I would imagine that our contractor is going to ask for their invoices to be paid. So, we're working with Jeff. It might, one of the options might be a temporary loan from the general fund, sorry, Minnie, with payment back from the grant when we receive it. So, I just wanted to give you guys heads up on that. The last item is, we did just receive a text from Mayor Barton with the latest report from the state regarding the impact of Senate Bill One. That's the property tax bill for calendar year twenty twenty-six for all units of government inside Montgomery County. The impact is one point six four million dollars. Calendar year twenty twenty-seven, the impact is one point five nine three million dollars. And county, calendar year twenty twenty-eight is five point nine three seven million dollars. The text from Mr. Mayor Barton also indicated that the proposal is to get rid of business personal property tax, which, as you know, our county is a heavy manufacturing county that would have a big impact to us and would impact our RDC and its ability to fund projects. So, we're still looking at that. I would encourage any of you that have any interest to reach out to your state reps, but also there is a, I believe the next legislative breakfast, I believe, is a Saturday. So, you may want to attend that to speak to your state representatives. I believe it's at nine o'clock at Fusion fifty-four. We are members of the Chamber of Commerce, so we do get the chamber rate. So, you're, I encourage you to consider attending that meeting. That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Kating, start with you.
Yeah, the only thing I, I have is to add, I saw where they added four hundred and some pages to Senate Bill One. And Dan, do you have any other updates on anything at all? I, it, it's scary to see what, what's going on up there and how they don't understand that it's going to affect every taxpayer in the state of Indiana.
Yeah, all I know is, they had a, they had a committee meeting yesterday where they rolled out the revised Senate Bill One proposal, and they received a do-pass recommendation out of that committee. And, yeah, I don't, I don't know that anybody's read all four hundred pages. I certainly have not, but that's what happened yesterday.
Matt? Mike? Steve?
I saw an email last couple of days, came from AIC, and I know the district meeting is, what, May fifteenth at Greencastle, but they're also conducting a budget workshop in the afternoon for that meeting. So, I don't know, I've, I've probably got some interest in that if anybody else does, so. But you can go online and register.
Gary? Joyce? All right. Real quickly, we've got approval of three claims there. Mr. Taylor would like paid, as well as Mr. Peters. And then the Swick's Kitchen, we fed lunch to the Highway Department, yeah, I'm sorry. So, I will. Any question or discussion on any of those? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our next regular meeting, May thirteenth, nine AM, same bat time, same bat channel.
And David, I, David, before we adjourn, I want to thank Joyce for putting together the lunch that we're going to have at the, at, I know, at the Highway Department on Thursday, correct? So, be, be prepared for the Highway to have some good food on Thursday. Thanks, Joyce.